Order, City of Longview Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for March the 17th, 2005. Please stand for the invocation. Commissioner Morris, please.
I agree with you. Our gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for your blessings on us, from blessings on the City of Longview. Lord, we thank you for the rains we've had, and we thank you for sunshine now as it has passed by. Lead us, guide us, direct us in thy ways. Lord, help us to make good decisions for the city and for the citizens of town. We praise you and your name. We thank you from your Holy Spirit. We pray a cross name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see. Approval of the February 17th Planning and Zoning Minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? There's my minutes right there. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On tonight's agenda, on tonight's regular agenda, item, item E. I'm gonna take this one off the regular agenda first. Item E has been withdrawn by the applicant. Okay, we ready? The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in following order. The applicant, the staff, the general public, those in support, and in opposition to the request. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson. Rather than have each individual restate the same information, when addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be considered by a city council on April the 9th, 2015. Tonight, we have an item on a consent agenda. Items on a consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or applicant would like an item removed from the consent and placed on a regular agenda for discussion. Does any commissioner make this request? Does anyone from the public make this request? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item A, on a regular agenda. Public hearing will be held to consider application RP 15-01 filed by Longview Alpha Construction LLC to replat Thomas Manor Unit 1, Number 2, lots 22 and 23, Block 10, into three residential lots located on the south side of Cheryl Street, east of Pine Tree Road. Who here represents this request?
I do. Ryan Pierce.
Ryan Pierce. And your address?
It's 2905 Fairway Oaks.
Mr. Pierce, tell us about your project.
It's simply just two duplex lots that I'm wanting to convert into three.
Okay.
Just the amount of square footage that I had on was easy to get three of the duplexes that I'm planning on building in there and still have plenty of yard.
Any commissioner questions for Mr. Pierce?
What would be the sizes of your duplexes?
As of right now, the ones that I have planned to go in there is a 1,600 square foot per side duplex, that's three bedrooms, two bathrooms. I do have a couple talking to me right now about actually building one for them and maybe a little smaller. That's to be determined, though.
And are there side yards?
Yes, ma'am. There will be, not huge side yards, but it will have, it will have the minimum setback requirements. We'll meet those.
Do they have garages on?
No, sir.
Any other commissioner questions for Mr. Pierce?
There are no garages. What kind of parking arrangements have you made?
It'll be just like all the other ones that are on Cheryl. I don't know if you've seen those or not. It'll have parking in the front with the sidewalk to the, to the, to the front of the...
When you say in the front, you mean on the street?
No, ma'am. In the, in the very front of the lot.
I got it. I'm with you.
It'll be on the property.
Which is required by the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So that'll be just like, everything else is down at Road.
Yes, sir.
Several times.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for Mr. Pierce? Having none, staff comments?
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting to replat two lots into three, two family residential lots. All infrastructure is existing. The plat complies with all of the City of Longview's requirements, and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff? One minute, please. Having none. The public hearing is now open for application RP 15-01. Who present wishes to speak in additional support of this request? Additional support? Okay. You're fine, Mr. Pierce. Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Please.
My name is Chuck Roberts, and I live at 1219 Judson Road. I own a duplex at 1,008 Cheryl, two places down from where it's gonna be built. I had somebody build a duplex, two doors down from my duplex on the other side, and I owned it for 14 years and didn't have any problem with it, and now it floods every time it rains. I had to go in there and put carpet in. I had to put in, I had to rebuild my backyard, build it up. I had to put gutters on it. I had to, the last time it flooded, I had to take all the carpet out and put tile in. And I wanna know if he's gonna build this up, if he's gonna raise it up any, if it's gonna, there's gonna be a drainage problem. I don't want the same problem that I have right now to get any worse.
And...
I want some assurances.
Those are upstream from you?
Where is yours in relationship to this development? Can you, do you have something to show us that?
I'm gonna, are these the three?
Yes, sir. These are the three lots right here.
Mine is, not this one, but the next.
Down here.
Thank you.
Down below it. As far as, as building residential lots, I don't believe he has to submit a site plan to...
He does have to submit a site plan through the building permit process, and whether or not he has to build up depends on whether or not it's in the flood plain or floodway, whether the city engineer would make him build up higher than the base floor elevation.
I don't know. I just, I just know that my duplex is flooding now. It didn't flood before. I've had to put, do dirt work in the backyard. I put $1,500 in now, put new gutters up. I put, I had to bring in someone in to dry out the carpet one time. I've had to bring in people to put tile in, and, you know, I just don't wanna, I don't want any more problems. I didn't have any problem until somebody built on the other, two doors down on the other side of me, and now every time it rains, my, it floods in through my back door of my duplex, so...
Which way does drain in this area? I don't, I don't know, 'cause I haven't been out there.
Well, it's, it's draining towards his lots, I believe, but if he builds them up, it's gonna drain back into my lot.
I understand that.
And what is your address, sir?
1,008 Cheryl. Well, I live at 1219 Judson Road, but I mean, my duplex is 1,008 Cheryl.
Well, as far as there being a potential drainage issue tonight, that's not really, I mean, he's asking to replat lots, and the drainage is more through development services.
Yeah. Through the engineering process, through the, through the building permit process, our engineer and our engineering staff does, they do look at drainage, and they study that and the drainage calculations.
Well, did they look at the drainage when they, when they built the other duplex, when now it's flooding my house?
How long ago, sir, was that built?
It was built about five years ago.
And how many floods have you had since then?
I've had to bring in people to dry carpet or put in carpet three times.
I just think this is more of an engineering issue to take up with the city engineer.
I talked to the man who built the other one, and he said he agreed that he would come in and put in French drains and do this. He hasn't done anything.
Okay.
So...
Again, I think that's more of an issue through the city engineering department rather than in this venue tonight. He's just asking to replat...
I don't mind the man building duplex. I just wanted some, some kind of assurance that I'm not gonna be flooded every time it rains.
I don't think that we can give, give you that assurance tonight. That's gonna have to come through the engineering department.
Yeah, and that's something that I can forward to our city engineer, and he can look at it, and we'll get your name and number later on in this meeting, and we'll have him call you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other present who wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. The public hearing is now closed for application RP 15-01. Do I have a motion?
I motion for approval.
I have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Item B, on a regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 15-02 filed by David Vines to replat Broadmoor subdivision lots 3 and 4, Block 1, New City Block 800, and the two lots located at 116 La Vista and on the west side of McCann Road, south of Fairmont Street. Who present wishes, or who represents this request? Having none. Angela, can you tell us about this?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Excuse me. My name's Jason Jones. I thought we were gonna have an engineer or someone that did the survey, 'cause I'm kind of a layperson on this. I'm the purchaser, and Mr. Vines, who is here, is the seller. This property historically has never been replatted, and through a, you know, nine or 10-month-long process of trying to get that done, we've come to this point. Just to kind of familiarize you guys with this, across from Brookwood Village Shopping Center on the west side of McCann Road, in between a parking lot of the small church there, they have a parking lot adjacent on the north of their property, and then there's a red brick building farther north on the intersection of Fairmont and McCann, all of this on the west side. So if you came out of that shopping center, you'd see the lot over there. It's approximately 100 feet deep and 100 feet wide, so that's what we're talking about. What I'm proposing is to get it replatted so I can go in and do really what's in line with everything else in the, in that neighborhood, in that area, and it's, I'm looking at between 11 and 1,500 square feet, or whatever the builder recommends. I'm planning on using Scott Hamilton, more than likely. His mother just happens to own that red brick building to the north there, and it'll be office, general office use, so...
Questions for Mr. Jones?
I don't fully understand. I know where it's located, but the red building that you're talking about, is that the Penny's and Jack's?
Yes, ma'am. It's the property that is adjacent to that on the south of that.
And you're not involving that building?
No, ma'am. I was using that as a reference point, both north and south.
The one south of that?
Yes, ma'am.
And there in the church.
Yeah, it's, it...
And access right now is where?
You know, it's weird. I don't know, maybe Angela could say this, if you look at the property, there's cutouts historically, way, way back in McCann Road, where there's, at some point in time, there was an entrance and an exit. I don't know what that means, but the property has never been separated from Mr. Vines' home on La Vista, which faces west, and then you have his backyard, which at some point was, you know, fenced, and then his, the rest of his backyard, the continuance all the way to McCann. So I don't know why those, but if you look, you can see two driveways that used to be there that were, the curb was actually cut out professionally. I don't know why.
Through, through the development process, our city engineer, along with text, will determine the driveway location, because this is a text road, so we do have to follow text standards.
So you're using one lot as residential, which is in the SF2 zoning, and then one lot, something...
Right.
Consistent with the office zoning?
Right. We're just proposing that, that back portion, that east portion of Mr. Vines' property be allowed to be taken away, which was done, which is, well, it's kind of another story, but another piece of it was done in the past from the Bible Church, that's, you know, the southern property, they have it, they have that real long parking lot, if you can picture it, and a, and a little piece of that, that's, that was adjacent to this property or was, was part of it, at some point in time, 40, 40 years ago, was, was taken off of it. It wasn't done the way that, you know, it should be, but, and that's, that's the part that's cut out where you see the parking lot. It's right there on the east, on the southeast portion. That was done way back when, I guess, when things were more handshake deals or whatever. The part I'm looking at is the, the smaller square there, and putting an office in there, so that's...
Okay. Any additional...
Is it currently zoned correctly for the office?
Yes, it currently is zoned office. If you look right here in this, this white area, it is currently zoned office. Yeah.
So we're leaving with this still alone? It's still gonna be residential?
Yes, it's still gonna be residential, and if you look right here on the, on the plat, you can see where the original lot line was. Originally, this was one tract of land. This was one lot, and originally, this always one lot. And so Lot 3 along La Vista is going to stay residential. This is just a subdivision plat. We're dividing land. They're moving the lot line to here and here, and so there's this portion that's left out because the church owns it.
Any additional questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Staff comments?
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting to replat two lots and correct lot lines. The plat does comply with all City of Longview requirements, and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I hope they're not difficult ones. What, so the original lot line is there between the two original lots, correct?
Yes.
Which, that was also the original dividing line between, between residential SF2 and the office zoning, is that right?
It actually, it's not.
It's not?
It was weird. The single-family kind of pushed out here further, so then you have the office right here. I know it's hard to tell, but the single-family, although single-family will stay single-family, all the office is office.
So when you say you're just correcting up, that's really what, we're just correcting that lot line to the zone, at what the zoning lines are?
Yes.
Is that right?
Well, yeah, and we're moving this original lot line out a little further, so we're adjusting. So this lot will be a little larger, and this lot will be a little smaller, with this lot line moving out to here.
But there is a house already?
There is a house already here, and if you look on the aerials, you can see that it kind of encroaches into this, and so this is why we're pushing this line back.
But that, or that push it back, that'll remain single-family?
Yes. If you look at this zoning map, and even if it, and even if it didn't, the, in office zoning, we do allow single-family, so that single-family house would still remain compliant. But yes, it, it will remain single-family.
And there is no buffer, further buffer required between the two?
Now, with, with Mr. Jones, when he goes through the development process, buffering is required on his part, but we don't require residential to buffer against.
Okay.
And could you put up the plat again?
Yes, I can.
So where the original lot line was right there?
Mm-hmm.
Go south with your cursor. So what about that 15-foot piece right there that seems to go over on the track to the east? What, has that always, has he always had that also?
Originally, I think one owner owned this one, and this one was, I guess, I don't know, the church, as of right now, the church owns this portion right here.
So they own a piece of a lot?
And then, yes, they own a piece of a lot, and then Mr. Vines owns all of this, 3 and 4A. And then Mr. Jones is buying Lot 4A, and then Mr. Vines will keep Lot 3.
Hence your replat. Okay. Any commissioner have additional questions for staff? Having none. Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
Excellent. The public hearing is now open for application RP 15-02. Who present wishes to speak in additional support for this, of this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. The public hearing is now closed for application RP 15-02. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item C. Item C, on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 15-03 filed by Clean Slate Investments LP and Bancorp South to replat Bancorp South subdivision lots 1 and 2, Block 1, into three commercial lots located on the south side of HG Mostly West of Judson Road. Who present wishes to speak in support of this request?
Good evening. I'm Joe Hart with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated here in Longview, 1201 Northwest Loop 281. Just available for questions. This, the purpose of this replat is to, basically, the western two lots, it was a single lot, cutting it into two lots, and then we're having to include Lot 2 to, as a signatory to cut, to clean up a, a lot line. They built the property, they built the parking lot over the lot line, so that, that was taken care of years, years ago, but now this is, this plat will clean all that up. So that's, they're a signatory on the plat also.
It'll clean that up, and then y'all are creating a lot, right?
Yes, I mean, what you're looking at's the finished product.
And then, what, what about the, the access lines through there? Is, does some of that have to be vacated, or is that, how does that...
There's an existing access easement, the, the lower one, that was platted or was effective, I think, back when the property, where the food line used to be, okay? But you know that concrete drive that goes through there doesn't follow the, the access easement, so this plat will dedicate a new access easement along the, the concrete drive.
The existing, okay.
And then once it's effective, the, the, the original access easement will be abandoned by, by separate instrument.
Okay.
And what will be the final size of that middle lot that you're creating? I can't read that.
It's, the middle lot is .895 acres, and then the, the left lot is 1.261. There's a dental office that's currently being constructed...
Right.
...on, on the western lot.
What are the dimensions on that?
It's like 200. Joe, what's the dimensions on that west lot? Well, it's like 250 or something?
No, the middle lot, the new lot.
Oh, it's like 180?
It's about 130, 130.78 is the, the width.
And the length?
And the length? 303, north to south.
Any commissioners have additional questions for Mr. Hart? So I guess, this is just from, I guess, from my questioning, I mean, so the dentist, the dentist office that they're building there right now, so it's, it's actually being, being built on, on, I guess, what's gonna be Lot 1.
1A.
That's both of the lot, well, I mean presently, as, as the, as the recorded plat sits today.
Right.
Prior to this one being recorded.
Right.
It's actually being built on Lot 1, but right now, it'll eventually turn into Lot 1A.
Yes, sir.
So, and then the, the ingress, egress easement will be vacated all at once on this? I'm just, I'm just curious if they're, are they building a dentist office on the ingress, egress easement right now?
No, the dentist office sits north of the concrete drive.
North, okay, okay.
And I don't know why they didn't build the concrete drive where the easement was years ago. It just, just didn't happen, so this, this is a...
So the concrete drive is coming further down?
The concrete drive is staying exactly where it is right now.
Oh, it is.
But it doesn't follow the access easement.
See, it was supposed to go straight, right there, and, and it makes that bend, and that's what he's platted on there, is the asbill.
So that's why I said this is kind of cleaning the whole thing up, putting the access easement in the correct spot, creating a, a new lot on the east side of the dental office, and then cleaning up the lot line on the west side of Lot 2. Actually...
Which is banked.
Any other questions for Mr. Hart? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff comments?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to replat two commercial lots into three commercial lots. As the applicant has stated, a dentist office is going on Lot 1A, and at Lot 2, Bancorp South is currently located there. Fire protection and sewer is existing, and water was extended. Plat complies with the City of Longview's requirements. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff? Having none. All right. The, the public hearing is now open for application RP 15-03. Who present wishes to speak in additional support of this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. The application is now closed for application RP 15-03. Do I have a motion?
I so moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Item, item D, on a regular agenda. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z 15-06 filed by East Texas Building and Properties requesting a rezone from single-family SF4 to parking for approximately 0.43 acres of the proposed Lot, Lot 5, Church Point Number 2, located on the north side of Church Street, east of Airline Road. Who present represents this request?
My name is Mike Alston. I live at 1310 Montclair, and I'm with East Texas Homes.
Okay.
This is a, just a little additional parcel that Roadhouse needed in order to complete the green space required on the parking lot that they've completed, and so we're just, we just tack that on to the additional, to the additional lot, and that's, that's what it's there for.
Commissioner questions for Mr. Alston?
Mr. Hart, you said this was for green space, but there's no, no parking on that one. This little place?
Right, it's just green space.
It's just green space. There's no parking on that area.
No, sir.
It's over the building.
Nothing's there, it's just that...
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Is it in front of or behind the fence?
It's, it's on their side of the fence, so the fence...
It's on the south side.
That is, oh, yeah, okay. There's 10 feet from the fence to where their lot starts, or 10 and a half feet now. There's 10 feet from the fence to where their lot starts, or 10 and a half feet now with this.
Who's responsible to keep that up?
They are.
It's from the edge of the parking lot to the fence. It's 10 feet. It's a 10-foot buffer that's required. Since it's parking for Roadhouse, that's adjacent to residential, we're required a 10-foot buffer between any type of commercial zone and residential. And so he's required a 10-foot buffer. So the fence has to be on the property line, but there's a 10-foot buffer between the edge of the parking lot and the fence. And so the person that will maintain the green, the buffer area will be Roadhouse.
Yeah, it is too.
Any other commissioner questions for Mr. Alston? Having none. Thank you, Mr. Alston.
Thank you.
Staff comments?
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family to parking for an expansion of a parking lot for Roadhouse, who is located right here. When the contractor for this project built the parking lot, it, from our measurements and what we looked at when the surveyor, we met the surveyor out there, was that the parking lot was built into the buffer area, the 10-foot buffer area. And so with them building into the buffer area, they would have, they had to buy some more property from Mr. Alston to make them compliant. So staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the existing use and surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
So, so they just had a construction staking bust during construction?
Yes, and so we're just-
That happens.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner questions for staff? Having none. The public hearing is now open for application Z 15-06. Who, who present wishes to speak in additional support of this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. The hearing, the public hearing for application Z 15-06 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Let's see, the next one, item E was removed by the, withdrawn by the applicant. Item F on the regular agenda. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 15-03 filed by DKR Interest LLC, requesting to amend planned development PD 05-3 to allow for alignment and layout change of future streets for subdivision for approximately 37.50 acres into Alexander Jordan Survey A 360, located south of Page Road, off of Mission Creek Drive and Santa Cruz Drive. Who here represents this request?
My name is Daniel Kessinger. I live at 6527 Rochester Way. I hear, I'm here as-
Can you spell your last name for me?
Kessinger, K-E-S-S-I-N-G-E-R. And I'm one of the owners of the property. We recently purchased it from the previous developers in August of 2014. And we're here today to amend the site plan that they previously had approved. We've done a couple different things. We've lowered the number of lots, approximately by two to three lots. And then we've reduced the amount of linear footage of street, of streets, curb and gutter, and water sewer lines by 700 feet. So we're here to answer questions.
Okay. Oh, I, I see on, on the, kind of the south line, southwest side, there's, what, a detention pond?
Yes, that's correct.
Right there. What, and then go up, and that, is that a detention pond also?
Yes, that's an existing detention pond that's in place now.
That's existing, okay. And so the other one's a proposed detention pond?
Yes, that would be in our next phase, in Phase 3.
That sits across three lots?
Underneath the high line, so it can be used, so.
There we go. Was there any, any, okay, so that's, that's the only detention ponds, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's a good place to put them there.
Very good place.
On them EMPs or EMF, whatever it is. Commissioner questions for Mr. Kessinger?
I'm sure you're losing one lot out of there. Because we're realigning it?
We're actually losing three.
Three?
Yes.
And you're losing those in the realignment?
Yes.
What, kind of, what was it before? We didn't get a before, we just got the after.
At the top, close to the-
Oh, y'all have to cut some of the streets out.
Close to the existing pond, we lost a couple lots at the very top.
Okay.
The previous developers were not going to develop that pond. We actually have plans to develop the pond, use it to retain water, and create an amenity with the, with that pond.
And then, Angela, can you go to the proposed?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And the, what you have preliminary right there, the preliminary engineering has been done for the drainage and, and utilities and street layout and all that stuff?
Yes, we're, we're working on that simultaneously. We do plan to, there are only a few lots left in Phase 2.
And that's, and that is Johnson &amp; Pace?
Yes, yeah. And Joe Hart's here to, to speak on any questions that you've got regarding the engineering. But we are working on those plans simultaneously, and we plan to, upon review and approval of our site plan, we do plan to file for our permit for Phase 3 upon approval.
So at this, at this moment, it's, it's a work in progress, it's, it's being studied and developed?
Yes, that's correct.
From a drainage standpoint, from a street layout standpoint?
Yes.
Utilities, water, wastewater, all of that?
Yes, we're, we're, yes.
However, we need to, we need-
We, we have some formalities that we have as far as approval.
Right, and then, okay.
But we're, we're working on, we're, we're working on that. We're not, trying not to get ahead of ourselves.
Sure.
But we've, just after looking at the existing plan that was in place, and just looking for some efficiencies with the cost of development these days with the streets and infrastructure, we were, by, by reducing the amount of streets by 700 feet, it made it feasible to lose those three lots, so.
Sure. Any additional commissioner questions for Mr. Kessinger? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Closest, okay. Having none. Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. Staff comments?
Thank you, Chairman Wood. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 05-03. Go back to the proposed one. To allow, to allow for a changing in the street layout, as well as lot line, lot, lot design. Everything else within the subdivision will stay the same, minimum lot sizes, which is 50 by 100 lot size. Setbacks will stay the same, minimum house styles will stay the same. They just changed the layout of the streets, as well as the lots. And they're not, they're actually, like Mr. Kessinger had said, they're going down in lots to, I think, from 205 to 202 within the total subdivision. Staff finds that the proposed planned development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land, or the future land use. And staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner questions for staff?
I don't, I don't believe that was this one. This one's, the subdivision's called Mission Creek, I think. I think Conway Homes was the original builder. Yeah, Conway Homes.
I know what you're talking about, yeah. Okay.
Any, any additional commissioner questions for staff? Having none. The public hearing is now open for application PD 15-03. Who present wishes to speak in additional support for this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Please.
My name's Doris Johnson. I live at 2710 Page Road. My concern with this development is the surface water drainage. My sister Linda Costello and I own property on Perry Street, which is adjacent to Mission Creek. The subdivision was designed with the purpose and intent of stormwater from Mission Creek Drive to be directed to the existing detention pond, drained through the culvert from the detention pond, which runs under Perry Street, and then dumps directly onto our property. During the engineering approval and development of the drainage plan for Mission Creek subdivision, it appears no consideration was given to downstream owners and potential damage, property damage, which will be caused by the drainage of so much stormwater. What is the criteria which is required for underground drainage system from a subdivision? The current plat of Mission Creek shows approximately 200 lots when fully developed. That is a huge amount of water that can't be absorbed by the remaining soil and has to go somewhere other than the adjacent property. Since Mission Creek was developed, our property has flooded and the dam for our lake is eroding. In the Drainage Ordinance, Article 6, Item A, it states that onsite detention is not required. Adequate drainage is required. Onsite detention of stormwater runoff shall not be a condition of, nor a requirement for, the development of real property within the city limits of the city. Compliance with the minimum requirements of this chapter in no way shall be construed as relieving the property owner of any liability which they may incur as a result of damage to downstream or upstream properties resulting from the development of the site or to install an infrastructure necessary to provide adequate drainage for the developed site. Item B, the term adequate drainage shall mean the drainage of water in such a manner that the water does not damage the property of another. What once were small gullies on our property have now grown deeper and wider with every significant rain, and new gullies are being carved into our property from the runoff of Mission Creek. On the back of the notice that was sent for this hearing, there is a statement that says, "The decisions of this committee are based on several different factors. One of those factors is protection of the surrounding property values." The value of our property is decreasing with every rain. For weeks after a heavy rainfall, several acres of our property become swamp, making that land unsuitable for development. We request that the current problem with flooding should be corrected before any further property on Mission Creek, which drains to the west, is developed. We ask that you take this request, PD 15-03, until a suitable agreement is signed with the new Mission Creek development. And I do have some pictures of the flooding that is occurring that I'd like you to see.
So, okay, go ahead.
This is just the, this is Mission Creek, and you can see that it's running down Mission Creek, or down Perry Street from Mission Creek, and it's overflowing our road. The culvert to the detention pond is there by the red arrow. It flows unrestrained until it gets to the culvert. My truck is sitting on the Perry Street, runs under that street directly onto our property. This is the retention pond or detention pond. It's extremely large. And so all of that water is going to go onto our property. This is the spillway of the detention pond. And you can see directly across from the spillway where the culvert is. This is on our side of the pond. The detention pond is here, and this is the culvert that's running under the dam. This is our property directly downstream from the culvert, and you can see that the flooding is significant. This is a new gully that's been cut by the previous rains. This gully was here before, but it's getting deeper and wider. This is a new area that's been flooding. This is the back end of what would be our pond. Our little pond is only, it only has one dam. The other three sections are open. So once our dam, our pond fills up, it starts backing up into our property. That's our pond, and it's probably two or three feet from overflowing. Now, there's already some erosion that's been caused from where it has overflowed the dam. What you're seeing here is the only side of the pond that has actually, has a dam to it.
Where, where is, where's your property on, on that map?
Oh, let's see. It is on the west side. This is Perry Street. So it runs down beside Mission Creek. And our property is to this end. You probably can barely see the pond off to the- It is-
I think it's, it's going to be over here. Yeah.
That, that's my pond.
That's your pond?
That's my pond.
Oh, the detention pond is right here.
Yeah, detention pond. You can barely see the spillway there.
Yeah.
I thought there was one up on the other, Mission Creek?
There is another, there is another pond.
Probably down there.
Detention pond down here.
To the right, to the right of that.
But the problem is, everything on the west is being directed onto our property.
Well, Ms. Johnson, your property is primarily a low-lying area, though, correct?
Well, part of it is, but not all of it.
I mean, that's water that's gonna run to it, and it has for eons.
Agreed. But we were never flooded until Mission Creek developed, because all of this area that was Mission Creek used to be crops. There was terrorists there. So we never got the flooding that we're getting now.
You know, it is, you know, I can't say for that subdivision, I don't know when that was or wasn't done, but, you know, it's the responsibility of the, of the engineer to, when he develops that, that watershed is, is to not increase the runoff. That's why they put that detention pond there, is to, the runoff is gonna increase with the development, no doubt about that. That's why they put the detention pond there, is to, so it'll take that shock and, and hold the water. But, you know, like in the last case this evening, you know, we really don't, you know, the drainage part of a project is more to, between the city engineer, the developer and his engineer. Tonight, he's, he's just wanting to replat the property.
Well, we think that we should wait to replant the property until the current flooding problem is corrected.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I, it appears that you're already in a low-lying area, and I don't think it's gonna be corrected.
We didn't have the problem before.
Well, Commissioner Bagman?
In this process, have you contacted the city engineer in the past?
I have. I was down there to the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I actually spoke to Ryan about this. I don't believe the engineer was there at the time, but he approved this plan where never the original Mission Creek project came up, and you see the results.
But your property never flooded prior to that?
Not like it is now. I'm not saying it did not back up, it did not back up to the extent that we're seeing now. It's in our trees. Several acres are underwater, and how long does it take for that to absorb? We have gullies, erosion, our trees are falling over. I mean, it's not insignificant.
Well, I, I can definitely understand, but this evening, what we're addressing is the replat, and-
And we feel that that should be halted until a problem is corrected.
Well, that's not what we're addressing this evening. Drainage is, is not, we're addressing the replat. This, this commission's not a drainage committee. That's something to take up with the city engineer.
And exactly what would the city engineer do?
They, they are, the city engineer and Development Services are the, are the ones who review and comment on the construction plans that do address the drainage. And unfortunately, I know there's lots of areas that, that, you know, have drainage problems, and if you- problems, and if you live in a low-lying area, that's, that's a potential. All they can do is try to, to limit it.
Well, it's in your drainage ordinance. It's, it's harming our property.
Well, that's, that's a, it, the, the purpose of putting a detention pond is, on there is to account for additional runoff due to the development from the pre-development stage.
I understand that.
That's what the engineer's responsible for.
The, the problem is, we're expected to take care of it.
In, in theory, in theory, when the project is built, the downstream people should see no additional runoff than they did prior to the development of that project.
Okay.
In theory. But that's, again, that's not something we address at Planning and Zoning. That's to be addressed with the city engineer, the developer, and his consulting engineer. Tonight, they're asking to replat, uh...
Well, the, tonight, they're asking for the zoning change.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as it currently sits right now, the developer could implement this subdivision right here. The zoning is in place for this subdivision as it stands right here, the, this subdivision right here, as it sits right now. They could put this, they could potentially plat this as of right now, because the zoning is in place for that. So, what they are coming in to ask for is to seek a amendment to the subdivision to allow for unalignment of the streets, a realignment of the streets, and to lessen...
Which one of those runs down Perry Street?
And to align, yes, ma'am, and to, and to lessen, or realign the streets and the layout of the lots, so...
I'd like to correct him, that we'll have three less lots on there, so if there's gonna have less drainage?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, there will be three less lots and actually less streets.
Less streets, less lots, less drainage.
Yes.
With this change?
Yes, sir.
That's my, I want to be sure of that. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And I would encourage you very seriously to talk to the city engineer, not the planning department, city engineers out of the department that works, and they'll give you his name and number and all that. So, I really would encourage you to talk to him a little bit. That'd be a good place to go, because that's where it's gonna lie.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
You know, additionally, you might think about, too, is, is that, once you invoke that conversation with them, you know, the, the city periodically does have, you know, large bond projects, just like right now, where we're kinda in the middle to the tail end of a large street, street bond project, where the, where the city has, has, is going in and upgrading a lot of the, the older city streets, you know, for better service. Well, occasionally, they do that for drainage standpoint also, but they, they need help from, from people like you to identify the, the major problem areas so that those can be addressed. And, and that might be a good avenue to, to start that conversation with them, that, hey, we're having major problems right here, and, and that'd be a good place to start also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Who present wishes to speak in additional opposition to this request? Having none. The public hearing for application PD-15-03 is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, aye.
Let's, let's do hands. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion, motion passes. Uh, let's see. Item G, a public hearing will be held to consider amending Article 26 of the Historic Preservation Section of the City of Longview zoning ordinance to include an incentive for local historic landmarks. Who present represents?
Staff. Um, thank you, Chairman Wood. Staff has amended Article 26 of the zoning ordinance to allow for exemption of permit fees associated with construction, rehabilitation, zoning, variance, plating, and taps. Designated local historic landmarks are eligible for this incentive, and they must first obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the local, from the Longview Historic Preservation Commission when necessary. The Comprehensive Plan states that the historic preservation, that historic preservation should be a focus as Longview seeks to be recognized as a most livable city in East Texas. One of the goals and objectives within the Comprehensive Plan is to build on Longview's historical significance and heritage by encouraging the adoption of development standards, zoning, and financial, financial incentives. Creating incentives is one of the many tools used to help balance preservation of the city's historic character with promotion of development. The Historic Preservation Commission, along with city staff, recommends approval of this amendment to Article 26 Historic Preservation Section of the City of Longview zoning ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, questions for staff? Having none. Uh, so we need to, public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All that stuff, okay. Uh, no commissioner questions for staff, okay. Public hearing is now open for amending Article 26 of the Historic Preservation Section of the City of Longview zoning ordinance. Who present wishes to speak in support of this request? Who present wishes to speak in opposition to this request? Having none. Public hearing is now closed. The public hearing for consideration of amending Article 26 of the Historic Preservation Section of the City of Longview zoning ordinance is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Uh, staff update.
Um, the Comprehensive Plan at the last council meeting was approved, along with all zoning cases.
Excellent. Commissioner, comment?
I do have a question. On my packet, every, the city recommends approval of this approval. That seems a little condescending to me, because we have people just, just like we just had, that come up here and voiced their opinion and everything, and the deck already looks like it's stacked against them voicing their opinion, as the city's already approved it, which therein makes us look like we have to approve it at that point. How does that come about? Who on the city recommends that that be approved when that should come to us and then go to council before the city can recommend approval of some action?
Well, the city staff makes a recommendation based on the future land use map and adjacent, adjacent zoning.
Well, I know, but the future land use map is just as good as what's around it, and if it's outdated. There's many, 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 many properties in this town that that, that buds up against. Just, for instance, just what happened. We didn't have, have a city engineer that okayed that or not, because she hasn't talked to him, hadn't had a chance to talk to him. I look at us doing a disservice to the citizens, because they're already walking in here and it's going, well, the city's already recommended it, the staff's already recommended it, now these guys are gonna already recommend it, and it's kinda like...
Just because staff makes a recommendation does not mean that...
But why does the staff recommendation it?
Based on, based on the...
When we're supposed to discuss it first?
Yes, sir. And based on the Comprehensive Plan, and we do actually have a new Comprehensive Plan, so based on the new Comprehensive Plan, along with the new future land use map and existing surrounding uses, staff makes a recommendation based on those two things. Now, if there are items such as the engineering issue, the drainage issue, that is typically handled, and that's, not typically, it's always handled through the development process. Through the plating process, our engineer does look at to make sure that drainage is adequate and that it does not impact downstream properties. That's when...
In this case, it already has, and in the previous case earlier, it already had. And these people are coming up here asking us for some kind of recommendation, and all we can do is send them to the city engineer, and why doesn't the city engineer look at this before it comes before us? So, we can eliminate these kind of issues and these kind of problems.
He, he hasn't, he hasn't seen, before, before it gets to us, he hasn't seen the final, the final design or final calculations that go with the final design.
Because a lot of...
And where, where that comes into play is?
These folks are up here looking for us for guidance or help, and we can't do anything for them, because the process is going a little backwards here.
Well, and with plan developments, they're, the layouts must meet what y'all have recommended approval and city council ultimately approves, but it's conceptual. They have not really designed, you know, what is the pavement with, what is all that, all the engineering work, they haven't really done yet. It's, it's kind of...
And see, that's just unfeasible. You, you, there's no way in the world to...
Well, it is, it is to us, but it's not to that lady that her property's being flooded.
Well...
And, and as a builder, Jack can say the same thing, we have to look at, when we're building a structure, we definitely try not to put any water or any more water than we have to on somebody else's property, because that's just a red flag for us. We know we're gonna have trouble from then on. But here we are, up here, this lady's, we're fixing to dump thousands upon thousands of more gallons of water on her when that's developed, and she has no recourse in knowing where it's going yet.
Theoretically, we're not supposed to put any additional water on her.
Well, I know that, but the retention pond that's already there is not working. It's not, it's not doing any good.
Apparently, it's not, but that's true.
So, that engineer's not an exact science expert, and we're fixing to dump more water into that right now.
Not necessarily.
No.
There's another...
The engineer hasn't been done on it yet. That's cost money to do that up front.
And if we do that engineering, they might decide to enlarge that pond, or have, in his case, he's got a second pond there to be developed. Uh, that's what I wanted to ask Joe Hart about, so they hadn't, he hadn't done it yet, so...
But, but in looking at, at just the pictures that she had, and, and, you know, I, I did a little looking at some topo maps before we got here, but, and, and that's in an effort to try to, try to explain, you know, to the applicant, but that's not really what we're doing tonight. We were changing the zoning for, for lots and streets.
It looked to me like that culvert was...
And the drainage part is, is not in our hands.
And that, they didn't suddenly...
And as far as the engineering goes, development would come to a grinding halt if the final engineering had to be done and then walk in here and hope that it passes this commission and then hope that it passes council. You, I mean, grinding halt, that's just not the way it's, it's done. Now, what she had out there appears to be, to be more of a, of, of a community-wide issue that, that may someday be in addressed in a, in a master flood study that's updated periodically. And that's how come I encouraged her to talk to the city engineer and, and, and some, I didn't say that, but any, some others in that group who, who take in the observations and requests from people who are having perceived problems. I mean, it might be a problem that is unfixable. I mean, if, if you're the one at the bottom of the hill, water's gonna come to you, and that's just how it is.
You can't say that to somebody when they've got hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in a house, and all of a sudden, they gotta replace, you know, flooring at seven dollars a square foot, because somebody up the road decided to put a road in, and they didn't engineer it right, and they're getting all those people's water now. That, that's the side I'm looking at it at.
Sure, but I don't think that...
You know, I know there's the analytical side from the engineer, and I know there's the side from these folks out here that are looking for some help.
Tough road in the middle, because we...
And, you know, what if we had tabled that and said, why don't we get the engineer to look at it first and tell us what they can do, and then pass it? But no, we passed it before we get, we had that shot.
But we're also...
And that developer has to spend that money. I understand that, but he understands that going in.
But we passed that knowing that that plan has to go through Development Services, has to go through the city engineer, and knowing that they are, they are required not to increase the runoff downstream. That, that's a requirement. Now, does that always happen? Maybe not. And in some areas, like hers, that maybe that's an area that needs to be studied?
Sadly, but true, was already pre-plotted, he could have left it alone.
Yes, sir.
And there lies the problem. Well, I wanna go back to what Steve said in the beginning, just to get his point. Angela, y'all say you approve it. It makes me feel like sometimes I'm up here as a rubber stamp, okay? And I guess the verbiage of you putting it on there and you not putting it on there might give me the opportunity to feel like I'm more participatory within the decision-making of what we were on this board for. It conjugates sometimes that we are just here, yes. And I think that's what Steve, were you trying to say that?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not saying in any alignment, you do have to make that before we got here, but sometimes it makes me feel like that maybe I should, I, I don't, what's my, what am I here for?
No, you're, you're here to listen to the applicant, as well as all citizens and anybody that has, that has an opinion on the subject. Staff makes a recommendation, just a recommendation, because staff does have the knowledge of the Comprehensive Plan, the existing land uses, and, you know, all the other things that go along. Staff makes that recommendation based on our knowledge, and we do have that knowledge through the planning process and through development, the development process. Do you, you do not have to go with staff's recommendation, but that is staff's recommendation based on the knowledge that we have.
The preliminary stuff?
Oh, yes, on the preliminary stuff.
That's true, but to the, to the white people sitting out there that are opposing the project, they come up here and said, well, the city's already said it's okay to approve it. That, that's the point that I'm looking at, too.
And we always, we always make that very clear. Staff makes a recommendation. We always tell the applicant, this is staff's recommendation. Ultimately, you make a recommendation. City council approves or denies their request.
I would hate to be the developer and sit out there and look down. Staff recommends disapproval, you know? I, I think it's...
My, my point is, why does staff have to make any kind of a...
Not very often, but it does.
Why does staff have to make any kind of recommendation?
I'd like to make a comment.
Any other commissioner comment?
I'd like to make a commissioner comment. I tell you that, I think tonight is my last time to be here at this, and I appreciate all of you, I appreciate serving with you, and I think you'll have a new membership here next month, understanding this. Thank you for all your consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. This meeting is adjourned.